The next item is 2081 Whitman Way. And it's a request for an architectural review permit for a facade improvement. A use permit for condominium conversions and a variance for substandard side setbacks for chapters 12, 108, 010, 12, 88, 020, and 12, 124, 010 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. It's the Merrimont Place, and staff report please.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Johnson and members of the Commission. The application that's before you tonight is for the renovation of Park Plaza Apartments and for the conversion of the complex to condominiums. The site is located at 2081 Whitman Way. That's at the corner of Cortland Drive just west of 280. The site is approximately 1.2 acres and it has an irregular shape and it slopes downward to the street. The complex was built in 1964 with 48 units in four buildings. Currently, there is also one unpermitted unit that was added by a previous owner for a total existing count of 49. There are also 72 parking spaces. There's a significant amount of landscaping at the site, including many mature trees. In 1981, a previous owner applied for a condominium conversion at this location. At that time, the application included a tentative track map, a variance for the parking, and a use permit, our local approval for the condominium conversion. The planning commission approved all three of those entitlements at that time, and the City Council then approved the final map in 1982. As the planning commission is aware, the subdivision map entitlement comes from the state law, and that's actually the larger entitlement. And then the use permit is the local aspect of a condominium conversion. At about the same time, in 1981 to 1982, Shelter Creek converted to condominiums and those started to go on the market. So at that time, the owners of Park Plaza withdrew their use permit from the city to avoid paying the condominium tax of $1,000 per unit. So the effect of that is that the subdivision map and the variance are effective, they've been in effect all of these years, but that old use permit is not in effect. So this current application that's before you includes a use permit that would complete that condominium conversion process that was begun in 1981 to 82, and also allow the owners to sell the units, really to go forward on something that was started back then. So I'd like to go through the details of the current application with you. So first, we'll talk about the architectural review permit, and that is required for the exterior changes to the building. We don't have very many arc permits that come through for multifamily residential complexes, but they are required. We see them more often for commercial buildings. The applicant's design professional is here, and they have some materials to share with you, and they'll provide some more details, but I would like to highlight some of the main aspects of the exterior changes. Most notably, they propose new stucco, so a whole new exterior material, and it has vertical reveals that add some depth to the facade that really kind of has been lacking over the years. Of course, new paint. At the entrance, there would be new features, new stone veneer and new canopy. The balconies would be refaced. Right now, they're in bad condition. It would be replaced with PVC decking board. It looks like wood, but it's very resistant to our local weather. So staff finds that these changes would significantly update the appearance of the buildings. The applicant is also proposing significant upgrades to the landscaping. About half of the trees are proposed to remain, and that would include the larger trees that are located at the rear of the site. Closer down to the street frontage and more around the front of the property, that would be replanted with new trees, shrubs, and ground cover. There's also a plant list that we have available if you would like to see that tenant was reviewed at the Architectural Review Committee. It does include a range of flowering shrubs and a range of planting materials that are very consistent but also drought resistant and kind of meet our current expectations for landscaping plans. So overall, staff does find that those proposed exterior changes would be a significant improvement to the site. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed that aspect of the project on May 14th. They had some minor requests in terms of some green building measures which will be presented by the applicant, as well as a rendering that included the trees, and that was included in your packet. So they forwarded the application with a positive recommendation. And so now if I can turn please to the use permit for the condominium conversion. As noted in the staff report, the municipal code has very detailed requirements for condominium conversions, so I'd like to highlight some of those key requirements for you. You may wish to reference page four of your staff report as we go forward, because staff has outlined there for you some of the tenant relocation benefits. The applicant has proposed to meet or exceed all of the tenant relocation requirements of the municipal code, and they are quite detailed, as you can see there in the report. All tenants would receive some benefits if they are in good standing and if they stay in their units until the owners ask them to vacate. Tenants that decide to purchase a unit would have that first right of refusal, they would receive a 5% discount off the sales price, and they would have assistance, they would receive assistance with the moving expenses during the renovation. So they'd have to move out of the unit they were living in, live in another unit in the complex, and then presumably back into that unit if they wish to purchase it. Tenants that are not going to purchase a unit would receive a minimum of four months' notice that they need to vacate, a cash payment of four months' rent, a refund of their deposits, and also help finding a new place to live. It's important to note too that there are nine households in the complex that qualify for additional assistance because they are senior citizens or permanently disabled. Those folks will also receive an option to live in the complex for up to five years with rents that are limited by the municipal code. And if they move at the initial request of the property owner, they would receive an additional $5,000 cash relocation benefit. So for those folks, the benefit ranges from $10,000 to about $11,600 for folks that are seniors or permanently disabled. So also as part of the conversion process, the owner is required to assess the condition of the property and make commitments to make the repairs for things that need to be immediately done, and also to fund a reserve to make repairs that need to be done in the future. And that has been shown, and staff has reviewed all of that information with this project. The applicant also proposed to upgrade, significant upgrades in the interior of the units before they were sold. That includes things like floor coverings, doors and hardware, appliances, countertops. So the units would be substantially new on the inside when they were to be sold. And so the final entitlement before you is for a variance, and the variance is required to allow a new exterior staircase on the east side of the complex. The staircase would have a one-foot side setback at the closest point where the municipal code requires a three-foot side setback. Staff finds that the variance is warranted in this case. It would provide access to that side of the complex. It would not have a negative impact on neighbors because that adjacent property that is kind of open space, if you had an opportunity to drive by, is actually a 60-foot easement that the water company has. And so that staircase should not have a negative impact on any surrounding neighbors. For this project, the applicant and staff did a significant amount of outreach to the tenants of Park Plaza in addition to our customary noticing that we would do to property owners in the area. The applicant conducted two meetings. The details are in your staff report, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any questions for them about it. Staff also sent letters and also sent a survey to the residents as required by the code. The results are in your staff report, but to summarize, four tenants supported the project, four expressed no particular opinion, and eight tenants opposed the conversion. Many of the comments, as you can see in the staff report and in the attachment, many of the comments were related to their concerns about finding affordable and safe places to live. So based on these comments and staff's analysis, we have included several conditions to try to help protect the residents and to help them through this transition process. So I'd like to draw your attention to some of those conditions. Condition number 17 requires a pre-construction meeting that would include the tenants of Park Plaza. So we would notify them, the contractor would be on site, it would be an opportunity to review a final construction schedule and make sure that they have a contact person to contact if there's any concerns while renovations are going on. Condition number 18, staff has proposed to limit the construction hours in this case because our normal construction hours would be quite long for the tenants to go through a long construction process. So we've proposed 7:30 to 6:00 PM. That's what's included in the condition. Condition number 20 is very unique to a condominium conversion project. It says that the applicant would have to provide a detailed schedule to the Community Development Director to staff when they're ready to move forward with the conversion process. So that would include things like, when are their tenant seminars going to be? How is the conversion going to be phased? When will their relocation benefits kick in? Kind of what can they expect? After we review that schedule, then they would be required to have a meeting to share that schedule with all of the residents. And condition number 21 we've added, based on some comments that I heard from folks, I thought it may be appropriate to have a speaker on affordable housing programs in the area at one of their seminars because some of the residents may be eligible for affordable housing and not know how to gain access to it. So finally, I would like to summarize why staff is recommending approval of this project. It includes a significant investment in the property, which is at this time in need of repairs. It would improve safety by adding fire sprinklers to this complex, and the fire department has indicated to us that this apartment complex is a significant concern for them because of the slope of the site and the unique characteristics of the building. And so they find that this would be a big improvement in safety there. The aesthetics would be improved dramatically with the facade changes and with the landscaping improvements. The updates would improve energy efficiency, and they've implemented or plan to implement green building measures as well, and there's a condition for a bike rack. And from a citywide perspective, there would be a 1.4% reduction in multifamily rental units. So from a citywide perspective, this changing from apartments to condominiums is relatively small, 1.4% reduction. And also the majority of housing units that have been provided here in San Bruno since 2000, so really in this decade, those have been mostly rental housing. And finally, there is a need for affordable home ownership opportunities in San Bruno, and this complex would afford that to residents and people in the area. So staff recommends approval of Architectural Review Permit 09001, Use Permit 09006, and Variance 09002, based on findings of fact 1 through 11, and subject to Conditions of Approval 1 to 36. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions for staff?
To the Chair.
Commissioner.
I have a question on, hold on. I have a question on number, Conditions of Approval number 20. I'm a little concerned about the requirements of, you know, making a detailed schedule. I feel that it's actually in the city's best interest to give a listing of what exactly is the detail that they're looking for, because I've made schedules before and it is nearly impossible to anticipate what is important to the city. So I would prefer that the city give the owner and the contractor a list of items that they feel it's important.
Yeah, we could do that, provide a list of what we're looking for as well as a template that they could follow.
That's fine, thanks.
Any additional questions? Thank you. We'll now open up the public comment, and what will, there are some, that's correct, sorry. If the applicant can please step forward and give us a detailed description of your project. State your name please and...
Thank you, madam. Chair, members of the Commission, Mike McCracken, I'm representing the owners Jasbeer Walya and Gary Meyer. And our architect engineer Steve Mincy is also here to address any questions, and I will be mercifully brief. The staff report was, that Laura presented, was full, accurate, comprehensive, and we have absolutely no questions or issues with it. For the record, I would like to note condition number eight, which was sound transmission requirements and compliance with Section 207 of the California Building Code. As I read that section, oh, first of all, the concern that I might have here is just the cost effectiveness of sound transmission compliance or requirements under today's standards for a building that was built in the 1960s. It may or may not be a problem from a cost effective standpoint. It may be cost prohibitive. As I read the ordinance, and I spoke with Laura before, and I believe she agrees with me, I see some flexibility built into that particular ordinance to allow the local entity, in this case, the City of San Bruno, to have flexibility to work with the applicant to come up with solutions that meet, that address the noise considerations of the ordinance yet do not make it cost prohibitive. And all I would like to do is go on record with that statement and say that we really want to work with the staff on this, and it's my understanding that the staff agrees with that particular position, but don't take my word for it, talk with your staff. Outside of that, I have nothing further to comment. I would ask, be prepared to answer any questions that you have, and I would like to turn it over to our architect and engineer Steve Mincy, and he can run through the design aspects of this, the green building aspects, and any engineering questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken.
Thank you.
If you can also please state your name, your full name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Steve Mincy. I'm with DES Architects and Engineers. The project that we have here, because of the date in which it was built, and as Laura has alluded to, is in need of repair but also in need of a facelift. And so the approach that we took, as you look at the existing images, our approach was, when we saw this, we saw a lot of random vertical lines on those two images, and we felt that it would be... Sure, or I think we're ready to pull those off. Do you want to be kind of...
No, I just want, if the commission can see them, would you like me to move them forward?
They are actually visible to me. Commissioners, are you able to see the details?
Okay.
And at one point, I'm sure the audience may want to see them, and we might at one point determine their direction, but they're very clear to us. Thank you.
Okay, good. So that was, as we saw this, so we felt that what the project needed was some more horizontal aspects to pull the project together, and so let me pull those off, the images that are behind, and if you can just set those down. So also the fascia material, you know, this is a combination of both what should we do from an architecture point of view, but also what items, we're great there, thank you, what items were in need of repair. And the upper fascia along that horizontal roof band was in need of repair, and so one of the elements that we have there is we've wrapped that with a metal fascia so that it can be more durable, and also it upgrades the look. And then we've added these horizontal elements in stucco as Laura had spoken about that will have some vertical grooves in them so that it adds some texture to the building because the facade is so large. And then there's a system, I'm going to walk over and point and then come right back. I guess you don't have a traveling mic here.
Actually, we do.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Great, thank you. Wow, that's loud. Okay, so one of the elements also on the building, on the existing building are these verticals in between the open garages down below the building, and they have small beam ends that stick out and are very random and not terribly attractive. So matching the horizontal piece at the top, we also out of the same material have a louver type material that's actually going to hide the ends of those beams and again add to some of the horizontal look of the building. And then as you can see, using the two different textures of stucco on the building and then the deck material out of a complementing color is how we've attempted to do this treatment here. And then the two accent pieces, one is the existing fire escape which is here and currently is, has a number of vertical, I believe there are about two by eight wood pieces there that are showing some sign of, in need of updating and whatnot. We're going to pull those off and we'll be adding this, these metal panels on that portion of the building, and that'll match the metal panel that we've chosen for the entry, updating the entry feature from where it is currently in the, with the canvas awning. So those are really the hallmarks, and then of course, here above the garage, adding a similar material where we currently just have the wood fascia that again is showing signs of decay and wanting to update that as well. The other main item is the use of the rock that we've chosen for the entry. As you may have seen in some of the existing photos and whatnot, that rock is, I know it's kind of odd to say the rock is old because all rock is old, but the style of the rock that was used in the entry is darker, more rough, and so we wanted to come up with something that was a little bit sleeker, has a little bit finer pattern to it that speaks to sort of the updated sleeker look of the building that we're trying to present. And then as well, coming up with a new entry feature, aluminum and glass storefront that doesn't feel so dark and recessed as it currently is to help update that. So those are the, those are the major elements of what we're doing on the building itself. From the site point of view, we haven't changed the site significantly, however, it's important to note that as we were talking about the one sidewalk that needs the variance because of its closeness to the property line, which is this sidewalk along here, and again, this is the easement running along this side of the project. The idea of doing the steps in the sidewalk were to provide emergency access to the back unit. As was Laura spoke about, the fire trucks are not able to get underneath these two buildings at this point because of the lowness of the roof and the steepness of the driveway. So by adding the extra walkway and stairs on the left-hand side here, we provide some direct either egress from people getting out of this building in the case of a fire or assisting firefighters to work their way up the side if this area is blocked. So that was the element for that. As far as the landscaping, again, almost a complete replacement of everything with the exception of, and we've listed out the trees in the packet that you have, the existing trees, holding on to all the larger trees along the buffer side here with the residential area, and then trying to replace as much as possible on the street frontage and in the courtyard area. Well, the one item that hasn't been mentioned also is that we've built in a handicap inaccessible stall here in the front of the project because currently there are no accessible parking spaces, and we felt that that was an important addition with a walkway that comes across, be able to get into the lobby and get to the elevator. So currently, there isn't one of those, and that would be for visitor parking at this time. So if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to, oh, sure, so let's, okay. So just adding, trying to add just a touch of movement to the, to the presentation. We may have to play that again. So here's the corner. As we work our way around, you can see the scale of the project and the new entry at that point. And then we have a second one that is of the entry. So short and brief, but it gives you a sense as it moves around. And one of the main, the aspects of it, right now, there's a planner box that comes out this way on the project. We've eliminated that because it does create sort of this dark hole, and we're trying to avoid that feeling. So again, trying to lighten up, brighten up, make it a little bit sleeker. The one final item I wanted to mention were the sustainable measures. You have a list of them in your packet. Most of it is, centers around the interior of the project in terms of replacing older appliances and making sure we have energy efficient windows, which they've already done that upgrade to the project, but energy efficient entry doors being fiberglass doors, replacing the toilets with low flow toilets, and obviously, the light fixtures that get replaced will have compact fluorescents in them. And then we've really talked about the exterior with redoing the landscaping, having drought tolerant materials on the outside and whatnot. One thing I might mention is that sometimes what gets lost in sustainability is demolition. And the fact that what we're trying to do is add to and do very little taking away from the building means that we're not putting a lot of material into the landfill, and from our standpoint, that is always a goal to make it in addition to as opposed to something that gets torn out and thrown away.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
To the Chair.
If you can please stay standing and...
Sure, of course.
A couple of questions. One is the rear elevations. I don't see any rear elevations or the east side elevations. At the rear, you don't see too much, the neighbors going up, Cortland don't agree with me, but coming up Whitman, we do see the east side elevation quite a bit, and none of these pictures or I saw have any of those. I'll ask a couple of questions, you can answer them all probably.
Sure.
One is on time framing. Are you going to do one building at a time or are you trying to take on the whole thing? And how about lighting? Any exterior lighting? And I think that's all I have for you.
Okay, let's take them in reverse order because that's where I'll remember them. Exterior lighting, yes, we're replacing the exterior fixtures outside each of the units, updating those with something a little more modern. And as far as the, I've already lost all of them.
The rear and side elevations.
Rear and side. In your packet, in the full-size drawings, I believe there is an image of what we were proposing for the rear of the project. We did not bring color images of that. That's page A3. And it just shows the treatment. We're going to be replacing the railings on the project because of the fact that they're currently metal rails that are bolted into a piece of wood, and they're not meeting current codes, and so those will all get replaced. And it will be replaced with a pattern that has the same materials that's being used on the decks on this side of the project, will be used in front of each of the entries. The idea is there is to give a little more privacy as you open the door and enter your unit and whatnot, and then open pattern on the railing in between. And so, and so that shows up on A3. Oh, please, that'd be great. So this is, Laura will show you the color version of that, of that particular drawing. And again, didn't detail it all the way down the building, but showed you kind of the concept about, you know, emphasizing the entry, and that's where the new light fixtures would be as well near each of those. As far as phasing, yes, we anticipate doing a building at a time and being able to move people around and, you know, kind of go through one then the next.
And is a building by building determined on sales of the units, or is it going to be a strict timeframe?
I would have to defer that to the owner.
And another little minor thing, not a, nothing major, on the front elevation on the corner of Cortland and Whitman, there is currently a bus stop, and it's a real busy bus stop for, especially for the schools and a lot of departments there. I was wondering if you maybe incorporate some type of bench or park, you know, because you have a grass area there now. And now you have a wall separating the sidewalk from the, from the street, and I think it might be a good idea to maybe get together with Samtrans or maybe just your own little thing and incorporate something in there.
I'm not recalling, there's actually a grass area on the corner of Whitman and...
No, no, no. Right now, you see the bent Samtrans sign?
Oh, here?
Yeah. Not all the way in the corner, yeah, just on that, right there, but in your new elevation, you're showing a nice grass area there, or it looks like a lawn area with some trees and flowers.
I'm sure a bench could easily be incorporated into that frontage.
I think it's a big, I mean, keep people off your grass and out of your property probably do it. That is, a lot of kids from the school take the bus up and down the street there.
Okay. To the Chair.
My name's Gary Meyer. I just want to mention, that would be no problem. Actually, the sign's gone. Somebody's knocked it over, so we have to put a new one up. But no, a bench would be fine, and maybe an addition, a nice addition to the looks of the buildings.
Commissioner Misha?
To the Chair. I have a couple of comments. We'll just go through a question by question.
Sure.
First of all, as far as the sound insulation of the, between the condos, you know, I'm a little concerned about how you plan to meet those thresholds and also how you plan to transfer that information over to the new owners or, yeah, new owners, I guess. to transfer that information over to the new owners or, yeah, new owners, I guess. Do you have a game plan on how you plan to transfer that information? Because sound coefficient in an existing building, obviously, is important, and if we go through alternate means of compliance, I would like to let the owners, the new owners know what they're getting into.
Yeah, I'll defer to Mike since he's at the conversation.
The, what we're going to do is we're going to defer to your staff, and we have to comply with all requirements. The question I got is what level of compliance is required under the 2007 Building Code standards for buildings that were built back then? To the extent that there's disclosure required, of course. Everything, the DRE is going to require full disclosure of all aspects of this development to prospective purchasers. But it's going to be your staff working with us that comes up with the standard that works. And I don't know what that's going to be as we sit here tonight because we just don't. It's a highly elusive concept at this point about how you...
Well, in my opinion, once you open that wall, you'll figure, once you open up that wall and see those connections, you'll be able to better determine. I understand that.
And it's obviously our hope that that's a minimal task because it gets very, very expensive. But I'm just going by the flexibility built into ordinance, and we're perfectly willing to defer to your staff on this.
Okay.
If that answers your, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, it seems that a lot of things that you're changing or modifying on the site, those components are actually part of the lead requirements for even the basic requirements, you know, exterior lighting, sustainability in terms of materials, in terms of recycling, and it seems that it'd be prudent to actually either go for lead equivalency or going for the minimum lead credits for this project. I mean, I understand that lead is expensive, but at least meeting the benchmark to say that this is a lead equivalent project would be something that should be part of this project. How do you feel about that?
I don't believe there's enough that's being, that we're proposing to do. We are proposing to give it a facelift, but at this time, I don't think there's enough to work with to actually get full lead equivalency.
Actually, I'm looking at existing transportation, existing building, I'm looking at, you know, how your light, you could actually use downlights on the exterior property so that you're not doing light pollution in terms of the actual square footage, you're not increasing the square footage. I mean, the way I see it is you could, you could apply for lead if you wanted to from what I see from this project. So I would like to encourage you to try to go in that direction if possible. Obviously, I don't know if I have any, I wouldn't want to force it upon you, but at least lead equivalency is what I'm hoping for. And I see almost everything you're proposing would go in that direction. Bike racks, I mean, you're even putting in bike racks.
Yes.
So, I mean, elements of this project really speak to the sustainability of what I'm pushing for.
Okay. You know, again, all those elements you mentioned, yes, we're, you know, we plan on doing all of that. As you probably know, to actually go through the lead process is, has a lot of paperwork, a lot of certifications, that type of thing, and...
And I am lead certified, so I understand the, there are precautions of going to get lead certification. That's why I'm asking for lead equivalency, where you're attempting to do it through your specs and through your drawings and not actually getting a certification.
Okay. Well, we're certainly willing to work with.
We are striving to get as far as we can along that line with this, with green building and sustainability. To the extent it leads to leads equivalency, yes, but we can't commit to that.
Okay. How many units are ADA, or is it just the stall? I'm trying to...
At this time, I believe it's just the handicap stall that we're installing. I don't know if any of the units are actually set up to be ADA accessible.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Buscari.
Aaron, how much latitude do you see as far as the sound insulation when you look at that issue? What do you see as your latitude in answering that question?
The first thing I would do is add to conditionate to the satisfaction of the building official. This will give the building official the ability to use alternative means to meet the code requirements, which we often do for existing buildings, attempting to meet current code. So I would recommend that we add that line. I would also recommend that we, whatever means we choose, that that be disclosed through, disclosed to the potential home buyers and noted within the CCNRs. We've had issues with other condo complexes that met this requirement through alternative means, and we've had people come back to the city, residents who live there, back to the city because they're not happy with the way that that means was met. So I would like to see that incorporated into this condition and also relayed to potential homeowners by the CCNRs.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now officially open the public hearing, and members of the public can certainly speak. You do have, there are some procedures in place, and what we ask is if each person can state, can state what they wish to, wish for us to hear. However, if there are several of you speaking on the same item, it's a good use of time to speak on a separate matter, so we're not hearing the same item each time. You could, you could actually let us know that you are, you agree with the previous speaker and however, and that you would like to add your additional points to it. We do have a timer. It's set at three minutes, and we certainly are eager to hear your comments, and we ask you to address your comments directly to us as commissioners. So the procedure is that you would step to the podium, state your name, and your street address, not necessarily your address, but your street name for the record. The public hearing is now open, and you're welcome to stand in line and step forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Clarich, 2081 Whitman Way. Lived there for quite a while. Project going forward as a condominium, giving people affordable housing, I think would probably be an acceptable idea. I've been there quite a while, 40 years to be exact, that I've lived there. So the building's a good location, it's got a lot of things going for it, and I think it would be a good idea as far as, for people looking for affordable housing, as long as those criteria would be made throughout the development of it, I think it'd be good.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Nick DiMario. Live at 370 Cortlandt. I have no major objections to the project. I'm one of the closest resident or neighbor to the unit number, unit D there, and my only personal concerns are the privacy issue. I don't know if the, this development will provide any privacy screening on the upper floors, on the balcony side there, because they will be overlooking, and they are right now overlooking, three or four of our residential homes there. But in particular, mine is more exposed to the south, I'm on the southwest side of the unit D, and the rear balcony there is overlooking the whole backyard, basically, of our residence. And so I'm not sure, you know, I apologize, I haven't looked at this report, so I don't know what they're, what they're, if they're providing any screening on the balcony side there, or even landscaping wise, provide some sort of privacy up to a certain level, you know. I know there's some oleander plants on the, most of the fence line except my fence in the area, so maybe that could provide some additional screening when they're doing the That's one question. My other question is, I'm not sure the density of the units, like I said, I apologize, I haven't read the report, is the number of occupants, occupants in parking areas, is that going to go up? What is the expectations as far as traffic? You know, we're getting a lot of parking in Cortlandt as it is from the apartments right now up to past my level, you know, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure what else I have right now.
Thank you. We're very happy to note your questions, and I'll just defer to the director if you wish to answer them all at the end of the public comment, or do you wish to address them as each one comes up?
I just could answer them real quickly now, these ones are pretty easy. The, they are, there are adding a number, there's a number of additional landscaping added. I do not think there will be any additional landscaping. It's hard to tell because I don't know the orientation of his lot, how it is on Cortlandt, but I do not think there's any additional landscaping that will help with the screening. But there are a number of trees that are already out there, and there is a number of ground cover type landscaping that will be added. Regarding same amount of parking spaces, one less unit than that's there right now. Right now, there's one unit that's unpermitted that will no longer be there, so the number of units actually goes down by one, and the number of parking spaces stays the same.
The number of what? I'm sorry?
Number of parking spaces stays the same.
Stay the same.
Yeah.
But what is the expected occupancy, the number of persons or units or...
Yeah, in general, rentals don't change the amount of occupancy compared to condos, so the number of bedrooms is staying the same, therefore, we expect the occupancy to stay the same.
And one last comment. In the interest of keeping a good neighbor policy with the closest residents there, is there a way we could get involved in the final pre-construction or final design approval? I don't know what the next step is, but it would be, I don't know what the policy is, but it would be nice if you could get us involved in the final...
It's pretty common that there is, that you have the opportunity to speak at this meeting. It's common to have neighborhood meetings, and I will certainly make note of that and be sure that your address is taken down so that you'd be notified of any activities that might take place where public comment could be taken into consideration.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on this project?
My name is Matt Tucker, and I live at 2081 Whitman Way. I've lived there for a little over a year now. I'd just like to comment on what Joe had to say as we, some of us would like the option, you know, to buy, and just like to reiterate what he was saying as far as would be a good investment for some of us and a good opportunity, granted it's an affordable option in San Bruno. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other members of the public? I'd like the applicant, if you can please, there was a question, pardon me? Sorry. There was a question on privacy, and that didn't get answered. And so if the applicant, if there, do you have any comments towards that privacy question that came up from the gentleman on Cortlandt?
Yeah.
Excuse me, if you have a question, you're welcome to go to the microphone.
No, I said, I agree with what Nick said about the back of the building was overlooked in the backyard.
Okay. Okay. I've asked, hopefully that the applicant can address that issue since it's your same question, and if you do have any questions, we'd be happy to hear your comments, so that way it's on the record, and you have the opportunity also to have written information sent to you.
Just further, helpful for everyone that hasn't been to the site, on the backside of the site, as it goes uphill, on the right side, if you were on Cortlandt or Whitman looking at it, there are three or four houses that go up, what I call the right side. And there is some trees there. Some trees grow faster than others. We don't have a problem with something as long as it fits into the drought-resistant kind of tree, and if it can grow fast enough to fill it, we'll do our best to give as much privacy to those tenants as possible. We consider ourselves good tenants, are good neighbors, and we want to continue that. I'm not a gardener, so I can't tell you we'll plant this tree or that tree, but sure, when we do our landscape, we'll certainly take into consideration the privacy because it works both ways.
That's correct.
We want the privacy for our project as well.
Anyone else wish to comment? We then will close the public comment and bring it back to planning commission for discussion.
There's a chair.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aaron or Laura or staff or somebody. One of the comment, the one with the neighborhood meeting, can we put even that condition there that before construction that the developer will set up a meeting with the neighbors so that he can, they can tell them about the time framing of the construction and give them, like some of these contractors, we give them hotline numbers if there are problems during construction, who they know who to call so they're not calling you, they know who to call?
Correct. That's how the condition is actually worded now, that they have a pre-construction meeting onsite and that the contract, they're able to meet the contractor at that and get him or her number, so it's readily available, and they don't have to call us every time there's a problem.
And so that will go up to the same posting as this would be too, or...
Correct. This would go, this was originally for the tenants, but we could also invite those who would like to be, who are in attendance here and would like to be invited to that meeting.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
I'd like to extend that requirement to actually post the number on top of the banner that usually goes on a construction site, if that's possible.
Okay.
Commissioner Mishra, you indicating to post the telephone number?
The hotline.
The hotline number?
Mm-hmm.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Buscari.
Reden.
Yeah.
I have two questions for staff. What are the ADA parking requirements on a redevelopment of this site? What kind of changes are required for that? And the second question is, how do we formulate affordable housing? Because a lot of folks have mentioned an interest in affordable housing. I noticed in this, they're offering 5% discounts. Is there a certain number of units that will be designated affordable housing, or what's that story?
I did talk to the building official about handicap accessibility both for units and for parking. The ADA parking space is not required. They are offering the ADA parking space at this location. So that's my understanding based on my conversation with the building official. In regards to affordable housing, I think the way that most people have been referring to it here tonight is with a lowercase a, if you will, and so not meeting the kind of local government standards of affordable housing, but just affordable compared to the market at large. The condition of approval that staff has included about having a seminar about affordable housing is affordable housing in the formal sense of income-restricted housing that is available through government and nonprofit agencies. And so there is not a technical affordable housing requirement on this project because it is a conversion, so it is not subject to the below-market-rate housing requirements that new units would be.
Good. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chase.
To staff, or maybe not to staff, maybe to the developer. So none of the converted units or proposed converted units are going to be ADA accessible? Is that what I have to understand? I mean, zero?
Yes, it is. It's not required.
Pardon me?
It is not required.
I understand.
Actually, if we could have the applicant step to the microphone, please.
The answer, Commissioner, is that no, none of the, none of the units will be ADA compatible for two reasons. One, it's not required primarily. Secondly, it just doesn't work into the cost-effectiveness of it. I don't know if that's the answer, the most ideal answer, but that's the fact.
Yeah, it's not the most ideal answer for sure, but, you know, thank you.
Okay. To the AD, we have exceeded the ADA, the existing ADA requirements though with the space and the accessibility to the complex itself, just for the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Mishra, I can make your mind.
Yeah, you can. Through the chair. Yeah, you can. Through the chair. You know, this ADA issue does bother me. And I wonder, instead of making a unit ADA accessible or making it ADA ready, is there any way to install backing plates on the, in the wall and actually make it convertible in the future? So instead of having tubs to have actually shower, instead of, you know, pre-installing backing plates in the shower already and getting that up and ready so that if anyone wanted to convert a unit in the future, would that be something that you'd be looking forward to?
All I can say is that any requirement.
We're going to need to, I'm sorry, we're going to need to respond to the microphone, so it's, our audience. The, our meetings are being recorded, so therefore, I, I know, it's easy to, just to respond back. And Rose, we would be happy to take your comments, if you can just answer that question, and then we can take you, if you can just step aside for a moment and let him answer that question.
Yeah, I understand.
Can I answer the question first and then we'll take your?
If you just, for one second.
I can't stand here.
Okay, then you know what, we'd be happy to take your comments, Rose.
Mine is going to be a fast one.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm Rose Erbach, and the question is, what's affordable? Is affordable housing for the rich or for the poor, for when? What is affordable? And if somebody buys an affordable house or whatever, can they turn around and sell it? Are you going to put a condition on it that they have to keep this affordable property for a length of time? Otherwise, they can turn around and just sell it, and it sells east of El Camino, they sell like nothing. And so that's the question.
Okay, thank you.
So who's going to answer?
The answer will need to come from the applicant, and so he will ask.
I want specific sound.
I don't want you in my case. The units are not going to be affordable in the sense that they're going to be price restricted. That's period. There's no requirement of that. The units will be affordable, as Laura said, in the lower case, and that they will be ownership housing, multifamily ownership housing that I believe there is a dire need for and there's a market for. It's not going to satisfy everyone's housing needs, and make no mistake about that, and we would not represent otherwise. It will not be price restricted. I, I'll put it in writing, I'm saying it here on the public record, ma'am, it's not price restricted.
Thank you. I also just want to mention that the public hearing has been closed, and it is our discretion to open it. So if you can please, if you're going to need to respond, I will need to decide if, if we will have a public comment opened again. Thank you.
So addressing the, the question with regards to making some of the units or a number of the units ADA retrofit ready in terms of placing backing plates and that type of thing in the units, I, I think it's, it's significant enough in taking wallboard off or, you know, in case of, of the bathrooms and having the, the grab bars in the right place and everything, that it certainly wasn't our intent to do that. And doing it to a number of units, if, you know, I almost heard you referring to, can you do it to all the units? And then, you know, somebody could decide whether or not to retrofit, I think that'd be cost prohibitive.
Through the chair, I, I'd like to rephrase that, I'm thinking about just one or two units, I'm not thinking beyond two. Because I'm sort of comparing it to parking stall to the unit, so if you're doing one, I would want at least one that is ready, you know, on the ground floor. So the thresholds are taken care of, et cetera, so that it, if the unit, if someone who was, who was, you know, physically challenged wanted to buy a unit that they wanted to convert for a little price, that is possible.
Sir.
I.
If there's a market for that, if there's a buyer, yeah.
Mike, you need to be on, you need to be up here on the record.
Need to be on the microphone.
I, I think, yes, I could speak for them, that one or two units, we could certainly make that so it is retrofittable. But again, the, the purpose of the space, to go back to that, you will be able to get into the lobby, use, I mean, we're making all of that accessible, ADA accessible to the elevator, up to the other floors, you'll be able to get to the units. But in terms of, you know, once you get inside, there's certain hallway width requirements and all of that, and that would require structural removal of some of the walls, and, and that would become cost prohibitive on some of those units. But there may be some, we can look at the various floor plans and try to identify the units that might be most, you know, easily.
So personally, what I'm looking for is, the bathroom is the biggest, the chunk where, which would cost an ADA for, to actually convert. So that is something that I would like to have ready. I, I understand you can't move walls, you don't want to move walls because structurally you don't want to keep, you know, destroy the integrity of the, of the building. But as far as the bathrooms being accessible, at least if one floor plan met, met some of the requirements, it would be easier to convert that. That's basically the intent.
My answer would be very simple, that if there's a buyer who's willing to buy, yes, we will accommodate one or two. I'm Jas Proalija, I'm the owner.
Thank you.
I had another question, which is for the.
Did I answer?
Yes, that's fine, thank you. For the planning director. Is there a way we're going to memorialize the sustainability measures besides what's on the sheet? Is there a way we do it in the city, like?
At this time, no, other than we have the condition of approval that says that, you know, they must follow the plan as submitted and approved by the planning commission. Since it is attachment to the report, and we do have them on record saying, you know, that they are going to move ahead with certain sustainable measures, they, they would have, have to follow those. But we don't have any, you know, any method right now where they, we actually lay it out, but that's something we'll work on with the new zoning code ordinance.
Okay, great, thanks.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Buscari.
As far as the sustainability that Commissioner Misha brought up, perhaps we can come up with a checklist for the inspectors as they go and look at this project? That they can just check it off and have something that they can work with so that they know what's been on that plan and we can continue to follow that through the process.
Absolutely, and actually, one of our inspectors, John Murphy, is, is green certified now, he went, went through a, a recent education process, so he'll know what to look for.
Right, but, but providing our inspectors a checklist of what we've agreed to tonight might be a, a good way to go.
Through the chair. To add to that requirement, that checklist is, should probably be made before construction starts, so that it is available to the owner. Otherwise, that's a costly affair.
Absolutely, what we'll do is we'll also review when we have our pre-construction meeting with staff and the contractor, we'll review it with the contractor at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? We then will, Mr. Marshall.
Well, through the chair. I will make a motion that we approve AR 09-001 use permit, 09-006 and the variance 09-002 based on findings of fact, one through eleven, conditions of approval, one through thirty-six, with the so noted changes that were discussed and agreed upon.
Would you like me to review those quickly, the conditions? The first condition was in addition to condition number eight, to say that the condition shall be met to the satisfaction of the building official and that the, the sound requirements shall be noted within the CCNRs, so the homeowners can be aware of those requirements. The other is that the contractor phone number be posted and be, be made available to the public, and then also that a checklist be provided to the applicant and the contractor so that all green requirements can be met.
So technically, I'm sorry, Aaron, I didn't mean to interrupt, so technically those last two would be additional.
Correct.
We're looking at thirty, thirty-eight, isn't it right?
Yes, and then one other note on condition number twenty, that staff shall also invite all interested neighbors to the pre-construction meeting held at the subject site.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
There's also discussion of having a city template or list of schedule items that the city will ask the applicant to provide at that meeting.
Correct, we will, I, I think we'll take that as direction rather than, since it's not actual requirement of the, of the applicant, or it could add it as a condition for staff.
Right, but then it should be stated that they would provide a schedule that includes items on the list that this city will provide. Would that work?
Perfect.
Thank you.
It's the move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. There is a ten day appeal process. You're welcome.